Call to order the Ashland Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, September 22nd, 2022. We'll start with an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we are thankful for our city, Ashland, Kentucky. We come today to ask your blessing and favor on this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we represent our citizens today. Give us wisdom and guidance as we strive to make the right decisions in the best interests of our city, bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's stand and salute high flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to receive and file the minutes for the called meeting held on August 30th, 2022?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings and reports. Commissioners?
Ladies first.
All right.
I don't really have anything to report.
Okay, all right.
Kind of quiet today.
Commissioner Spriggs? Sorry, no.
We'll let the lady go. Go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, just want to say welcome everybody. Appreciate everybody here and also want to say how great POGE Landing Days was. It was a, it was a big event and we had a lot of people downtown and it was great to see. So thanks to the committee and everyone who's involved in POGE Landing Days. But the garage, so we got to use, my family chose to use the garage when we went down to, to visit the festival and, and it was really nice. You know, we've got a stroller now, so we were right by the door and pushed our stroller, went down the elevator and right there you're out onto Broadway. So it was, it was really nice to be able to utilize that and hopefully as more citizens realize it's open and able to be used when it is open, the people utilize it and help to, you know, help with some of our issue with, with parking downtown. Latin Night Live will be October 1st, so just reminding everybody about that. Also Kids Fest at the Highlands Museum is going to be happening on October 15th. That's a great event for, for your young ones. And last but not least, we're probably going to hear a couple of words about what we, what we did with, visited at Hillcrest Brew's Mission the other day. And that was, basically what we were doing, we were celebrating the graduation of some folks who graduated from the adult education program there. And that was, you know, it's, it's one of those times when you just look at, you know, these are the people that are doing the things that matter. You know, it's, we have important things that we deal with here, but outside the city building, the folks have put the work in to help our citizens who are willing to help themselves. And a couple of things that, that Mike shared with me just about the, the mission and what they do there, you know, when folks come in, a big problem is a lot of people, the mindset and their dignity is, is, can, can be an issue sometimes and helping them to get resources. And they do it in a way that, you know, people can come in and some things they can, they can pay a very low fee for so they can still feel like they're shopping and, you know, it's just things like that, caring about things like that. You know, it's, it's not just providing food and supplies, it's caring about the person's experience in that. And that's, that's something that is extremely important for us and I think it's important for us to see that and we appreciate you very much for it. That's all I have.
Mr. Goode?
I just want to welcome everyone today and I don't want to rehash Commissioner Blanton, but those were two items that I had was Christie Mead, you did a wonderful job along with your POGE landing volunteers and parks and streets and I thought it was a great event, hundreds of people in downtown Ashland. Plus the LST was, was at the Port of Ashland and the latest numbers were 8,900 people went through the LST during the weekend. And I was thankful for that, good food and good entertainment and vendors and so forth. I was also at the adult literacy where the mayor gave a proclamation for the Adult Literacy Week and we saw the success stories at Hillcrest Brew's Mission. And I can't say enough about Mike Maynard and the mission up there and the job that they do for our city. We've seen people get their GED, we've seen people go, enter college and, and find good paying jobs and we heard testimony about that. I just want to make mention the Foxfire Festival will be tomorrow and Saturday on the riverfront and then Chili Fest will be next, next month, October 22nd. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Spriggs, finally.
Well, it's really good to see Ashland hopping this weekend. There was a lot going on. Ashland was the place to be and it was evidenced by the amount of people we had downtown. So it's really gratifying to see our lovely city being enjoyed and we had beautiful weather. Everything was great. I've said this before, I did everything these two guys did. Amanda was out of town, so, so I'm not going to be redundant and go over those, but I will say I was really touched by the stories at Hillcrest Brew's because those, you know, life gets bumpy sometimes and it's tougher for some people to get over those bumps. So I'm really proud of the job you're doing, Mike, because, I mean, it's amazing to see those people who really appreciate the help you've given them and the guidance. And, you know, I said that first step is the hardest and the last mile is the hardest. So, but, you know, just deciding you're going to go do something and then putting your foot on that path, it's pretty amazing to hear those folks' story. You play a big part in that, so thank you so much. POGE Chapter DAR had a dedication for Annie POGE's headstone this weekend. It was, we had about 60 people there. It was a fabulous event. If you don't know about Annie POGE, look her up. She was quite a, an awesome woman at a time when she was born in 1857, so it's pretty interesting to read about her. We also read the Constitution at four o'clock, read the preamble to the Constitution at four o'clock for Bells Across America, so in honor of Constitution Day and Constitution Week. I'm happy to say that the Commissioners were there and the mayor, and so it was very ni, and the city manager, so it was nice. I want to thank the City Parks Department because they did a great job of getting the headstone set and getting all that ready, so I really appreciate that. It was wonderful. Also, I had the privilege of doing the welcome ceremony for the USS LST and I was, which is, which is fabulous and always get, touches my heart when I think about the history of that ship and what it means to the United States and everybody, every fighting soldier that was ever on there. But he, the captain presented to me the LST 325 bow door key and appreciation of hospitality and support. So I'm in turn, instead of giving the mayor a key to the city, I'm going to give him the key to the ship, so.
Some people want to ship me out, so this will be perfect.
Here's your way out.
This is for you and the city and for the great job everybody did down there. The city did a wonderful job setting that up too. It was really wonderful, so thank you.
Well, I too want to echo the comments of the Commission. Mike, we, we can't sing enough of your praises with what you're doing at the mission. And I've said this the other day and I'll say it again, you don't have to go out of this country to help a mission. We have a mission right here at home that's helping people every day and it's not just helping hand out things, you're giving them a hand up and you're seeing these people succeed. You're sharing those stories with us to let us know that the dollars we're putting forth to help you all helps them see their dreams come true. So it heartens all of us every time we get to participate in events like you had the other day. I also want to share my, my thanks to Christie and the team that came up with all the events for POGE's Landing. It was a wonderful weekend, the weather was perfect. I got to meet one of the descendants of the POGE's who is 94 and drove from Chicago.
Drove. Is still working.
And is still working. And he was really excited to be there with so many of his distant relatives. We ended up, I told them all, they may live all across this nation, but they can always come home to Ashland. And I presented the keys to the city to all the descendants of the POGE's that day. Also want to give my thanks, we've had some kudos from our police and fire. We had a fire yesterday and we had some citizens reach out to me to let me know how impressed they were with our police and fire response, so I want to thank you all. Also want to thank our utilities department, part of a community board for the Federal Correction Institute. And they shared their thanks to Mr. Hall and his team and the utilities department for some issues they were having. A lot of, a lot of people doing a lot of good work in our city behind the scenes that you don't always know about. So with that, I think we have some other issues. Are we going to go now or?
We'll do them after.
Do them after. Okay, then we'll go on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, for the sake of time, just really want to echo some of the thanks to everybody on the city team. It was really a crazy, busy weekend and everything that you all did was just fantastic from every department. But again, to reiterate on streets and parks, APD and AFD, thank you very much. Thank you. I did have to leave early. I had a conference starting on Saturday. I want to thank the Board for allowing me the time to go to the International City Managers Association Conference. It's the first one I've been to. Thousands of city employees are at this conference. It was really a, a sharing of best practices, lessons learned, so it was incredibly invaluable. If anybody has any questions on that, I gave a detailed rundown to the elected officials, but it was time, time well spent. And we are still, per the last couple of reports I've had, Mayor and Commissioners, we're still focusing on getting the feasibility assessment back from, on the conference center study and also trying to move forward with our finalized plan on parking downtown, which are still due outs to us. We still have some things that we've got to get done before we present those to the Board. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the Commission concerning matters related to city business, services or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes and only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry complaint form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department.
Hello.
Good afternoon. If you don't mind, just tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Tina Campbell Ray. Actually, we're the owner of the Governor's Ambedham Breakfast on Bath Avenue. What we'd like to bring to everyone's attention, a lot of people may already be aware of, we have had a lot of safety issues and concerns around Central Park and Bath Avenue here recently. We have noticed a large influx of, we should say, the correct word instead of homeless people, will be people without homes now in our area. I have noticed in the last two weeks personally with us walking our pets or with having cameras around our homes and meeting with our neighbors, it is, the last two weeks, it is horrendous of how many new people are coming to the area. It's, they're druggies, more so than homeless people, I would say. They're on bicycles, they're carrying backpacks, they're walking the alleys, they're stealing stuff from people's porches, they're attempting break-ins in the last weeks up Bath Avenue's homes, and I guess we're aware of. Some of the neighbors have not even reported it, so you're not even aware of some of the incidents that have occurred. It is really scary. I mean, we actually bought that home on Bath Avenue, which is 1612 Bath, close to the park, eight years ago. It was very peaceful, a quiet area, even though we were close to the school, we loved to hear the kids run and play. That has changed drastically. If we do not get a handle on this, we're trying to bring new businesses into Ashland. But from what I'm observing, it is getting scarier than living in Miami. We lived in Miami for 20 some years and I will tell you, if you all do not get a handle on this quickly, it is going to go like Huntington or it's going to be a ghost town in Ashland. So this is just what I'm observing. I owned a security company in the Miami area. We had undercover, we worked with the police department, I know what I'm talking about. Not throwing off of the police department, I worked with the police department, I am for the police department, but we do not see the police presence in Central Park, Bath Avenue, in the alleys, Montgomery. You have a new building, not a new building, an old building between Bath Avenue and Montgomery. It's an apartment building right behind the Mayo Mansion there. You've got a lot of druggies in there now. They sit on the porch, they're actually trafficking probably right behind our alley. That's where they're going back and forth to the park. We have put up signs, we have put up cameras. If you watch them, they're all carrying black backpacks with like a white, I don't know if it's an emblem, I'm not closer enough, but there is a trend of the backpack that they're carrying. So either someone's giving out those particular backpacks to the drug people, is what I'm thinking. There is a sequence, so either someone or something is bringing all those people into our area. That's what we have to figure out. It is getting very serious. I've actually began to carry mace with me to the park to walk my dog, which is not good. We have a lot of elderly people, some handicapped people surrounding us. I have informed them over the last few weeks, please do not open your door. If you do not know that person, do not open your door. It is that bad. I'm thinking maybe where we're having concerts and stuff, we might be making a lot of our, centralizing a lot of our police force downtown on the riverfront or maybe that. And maybe we're taking it away from Central Park and some of their other areas, I'm not sure. But seriously, by walking, we don't, we see police officers go up 17th, make a left on Lexington every day, but we do not see them go down Bath, down the alleys, down Montgomery, down any of those streets. So we do need, if you could please, give us more patrol down those areas, let them see more patrol in those areas and that will be. Now as far as benches, we appreciate the new benches you all put around Central Park, they look beautiful, but there are a lot of homeless people sleeping on those benches. What we have found out in Miami, I hate to keep bringing this up, but we've learned a lot of things in Miami. If you put dividers on those benches, just have them installed, weld them on there, that will stop them from sleeping on them. That's one easy thing you can do and that will help drastically. If you can place some unmarked cars, not unmarked, marked cars at Crabby Elementary or around the park that you're not using, you don't have to put a police officer in there, but just put them around through the areas, they'll pick up that there's not a police officer in there, but if you keep moving around, it will deter some of those drug users from, I've even seen them exchange drugs on Saturday right in front of Crabby Elementary. I've seen a drug exchange. So they're bold, they're not afraid. They will even ring your Ring Doorbell to let you know they're there and sit on your porch, hey, we're here, so I don't know if that's a mental issue, but they're brave, so they're not afraid of us. That's another issue. I've heard that we don't arrest them, is that true? If somebody attempts to break in a house, if they don't actually break in it and we call the police, what, what happens to them after that?
If you call the police, you respond, if the individual is there, you have to give them a trespass notice, they refuse to leave and they can arrest them.
Okay, so we have to issue them a trespass and warrant while they're there on the property.
In front of us and that is by law.
What if they break into our home?
That is, if they complete the burglary, that is a burglary in the neighborhood.
And Kentucky is a stand your ground state? We're allowed to protect our own property if something happens?
Then they're breached over there.
We don't want to do that, but this is getting scary, so we, we have to know those rules just in case it happens. But we do respect the police, I want you to know that, but we're asking for help. We absolutely, for our businesses, for our safety, for our children. We even have some, there's a, he might be a lonely little old man, but there is some people, like a little old man in a white Dodge pickup truck, that sits there every day watching the kids when they come out and play at the same spot, only when the kids arrive at the park. Is he supervising and thinks this is joyful or is he looking to grab one of them? I don't know. But I'm just scared about some situations that I personally observe every day.
Ma'am, I, ma'am, I appreciate your comments. The time has expired, but I do want to respond to your comments. This Commission is serious about the issues that you have brought up today and our police department is serious about the issues that you've brought up today.
I appreciate it.
We have a high to task force that our police department's working closely with for drug trafficking and that's part of federal funding, I think that was the way it was set up. We also have a task force, a rapid response team that is brought out when police can't arrest, that there is the ability to case manage people that are maybe dealing with issues. But there is more that we can do and I am not disputing that and I-
You know what's brought them in here all of a sudden?
Well, there's, there's probably multiple reasons, but what we want to do as a Commission is this, we're going to start a task force that's called Project Safe Home and it's strategic and focused on implementing and ending homelessness, opioid addiction and mental health epidemics. A task force charged with creating best practices in the implementation of effective homelessness, opioid addiction and mental health strategies. The task force will be made up of city officials, citizens and community partners to address the growing concern of public health and safety in regards to these matters. This epidemic is nationwide.
I agree, yes.
And we are no different. We have seen it here in our city. What we have to do is address these issues with compassion and empathy for those suffering. Studies have shown most homeless populations have either a severe mental illness or long-term substance abuse problem or both. But also I say this, poverty is not a crime, mental illness is not a crime. As this task force gets going, I anticipate them to request of the Commission changes to policies and funding so that we can focus on where our best efforts can be utilized. to policies and funding so that we can focus on where our best efforts can be utilized. We're gonna need help from state and federal agencies. I've had conversations with state, elected officials, and many members of the community about the need for proper funding for these issues and reducing requirements and judicial hurdles that may delay access to housing and services like treatment and counseling. This problem wasn't created overnight, and it won't be solved tomorrow. But we are in this for the long haul. We will address these issues head-on, not only for the health and well-being of those suffering, but for the health of our local community and economy. And with that, I thank you.
All right, yes, we'd be glad to join any committee or anything that we can help, you know.
I, I think what we have to do is treat this as a community effort. And it's not just government's role, it's gonna be nonprofits' roles, it's gonna be individuals like yourselves, and I'm a small business owner, I understand. You know, we, if, if there's best practices used anywhere in this country, this task force is gonna look at them.
Okay.
And we're gonna see what we can do better, and to eliminate some of the issues that you've discussed today. And we appreciate your time, and we appreciate you taking time out of your business to come see us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, one other thing is, you'd mentioned that sometimes things aren't called in. We can't respond if, if the police don't know about them. So there's, I've reiterated this many times, our 911 takes non-emergency calls also. They realize that, I, when I call up and I have issues with things that I see, I always identify and say, this is a non-emergency, they prioritize it accordingly. We got 20,000 people in the city, 80,000 pass-through a day. It's a lot of, in my vernacular, a lot of scouts that are out there that can put eyes on, that can help our police department respond to these. So please, please, please call.
When I told the gang members, I was like, please, you have to call, so they have to report it.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
And they'll, they'll triage properly if they're on a higher priority, of course, they'll take care of that. But I just, I beg the citizens to please call 911 so that we can respond to those. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's David Williams. I just kinda, this lady here interests me. I used to own, still own, a house on Lexington Avenue. Over a decade ago, I had a, pretty much abandoned the home because of the same sort of issues that were happening on Hilton Avenue. And we actually ended up having to buy a house on Hilton Avenue that was a drug house. So it is an issue, and I would love to see, sounds like she has a lot of past experiences that would be worthy of being put on that committee. I ask that you consider her, along with others. I heard that you were talking about a potential plan for our new parking garage in our convention center. When will that be rolled out for the public to participate?
Feasibility study is going on right now, Mr. Williams.
Okay. Any timeframe?
Completion of the feasibility study likely November, like I mentioned a couple meetings ago.
Okay, November. You know, one of the things I, I look at, and you know, you can't, if you had a crystal ball, we'd all be in a, in a better spot. But we understand, looking back in the future, you know, 2017, we had Brady Industries come in and offer such great promises, and, you know, and we were in a kind of desperate mood, and, and we heard them, and they said that we needed, it just sounded too good to be true. I mean, everybody's heard about the Winchester Wall, no funding comes past Winchester, and to hear someone, you know, give that kind of adamant praise towards Ashland, it was worthy of listening. And of course, one of those things that they asked for was a, they needed a hotel, and they needed a good convention center. And so, you know, we kinda went down that path, and we actually went in and put a TIF financing plan together in 2017 to give the Marriott Corporation, the Delta, to allow them as a kind of incentive package. That, those bonds never really were protecting the city, and so that annual payment of, on the 4.5 over 20 years, somewhere around $301,000. Now, a TIF loan is basically meant to be paid back, as you may well aware, I, I wasn't until I started looking into it. You know, future job employments, future property increases and thereabouts, and that hasn't materialized. Since 2017, the payment, annual payment never has been made. We probably are forecasting that maybe 50,000 of the, of the hundred, of the 301 is being brought from the sources that we put the loan together for. So the city of, the citizens of Ashland is paying a quarter of a million dollars a year. That's coming out of general funds, that's coming out of everything. Now, if we, if we're looking at, at, if we, if, if that's what we went to project enough to put that kind of incentive plan together, this feasibility study is gonna have to be off the charts. We talked about the parking garage, and we're just trying to roll that out, and I'm not trying to be Mr. Negative here. I just want, I come from an oil and gas mindset that, for 30 years, and projects had to be justified. If there wasn't an ROI, return on investment, we didn't do it. We talked about the parking garage, how nice it was to park in. If you got an SUV, you're not gonna park in that garage.
I do.
But I will say this much, I walked that parking garage at around 10:45, all the way down, 833 slots, there's only 26 cars in the whole parking garage. And you wonder, is that, granted, the only thing I can think that the city of Ashland got out of it was public bathrooms for Broadway Square. But I couldn't justify that kind of expense. I mean, 400 and some thousand is what, and kudos to Ms. Briggs for championing that. I mean, she said, let's do a feasibility study, let's do the feasibility, but you guys went head-on into that. You must have known something the rest of us didn't. But I, I wanna make certain going forward, I'm all for progress, but not at the citizens' expense. And I just feel that, you know, kinda going back, if we wanted that TIF funds to even break even, assuming property values never increase from here on out, of course, we're, we're five into a 20-year loan, but we would need to create 400 jobs of $15 an hour just to break even. Do we think that's even feasible downtown? I'm just asking. But on a positive note, you know, we wanna talk about what is going right. And we talked about, I'm a big supporter and advocate for career and technical education. And so I, I have been told, haven't had it completely confirmed, but I've had some good sources that tells me that Ashland Blazer students will now be going to one of the local vocational schools. It won't be Boyd County, as Mr. Goode had alluded two months ago, but it will be one of the area technical centers that we all pay our taxes on. I don't think we'll get that many slots, but it's a start. If you wanna know where I think we can go, we gotta give these homeless people some hope. And how you give them some hope is you start off with a skill. I'd love to see us be able to continue to prosper and, and have all kinds of new businesses open, but new restaurants and new tourism is really not gonna pay the bills. And, and my big concern, I am all about the police force and the fire department, but when you're stretching them too thin, when you take your alcohol sales all the way up through South Ashland, these, the folks can only do so much.
Mr. Williams, your time has expired, and we thank you for your comments.
Mayor, I have a comment, because I can't not. A couple of things, because I, one, I can't stand misinformation. Brady Industries and the Delta Hotel were not related in any way.
Didn't say they were.
No way at all. They didn't ask for a hotel, they didn't ask for a conference center, not even related.
I can show the paper.
What we know is, we had a hotel, excuse me, what we know is, we had a hotel sitting in the middle of our downtown that was falling down, and our options were to let it fall, let downtown crumble, or pass a TIF bond. And in concert with Boyd County Fiscal Court, three of us up here and the Boyd County Fiscal Court decided our best option was to put money into that project. A TIF bond is a loan. It is not meant to be a moneymaker for the city. It is meant to finance a project that would not happen if not for those funds. If not for those funds, we have a giant hole in our downtown. We don't have five new restaurants, we don't have new businesses filling in every storefront in our downtown. Those things don't, do not happen. It is a conscious choice of this commission to make those things happen. And without that money, it wouldn't happen. And I'm sorry to get emotional about it and upset about it, but the misinformation I can't stand by. $79 million was spent in Boyd County on tourism activities in 2021. That's not our money, it's not your money. $79 million spent by people spending the day in Boyd County on tourism activities. Mr. Williams, I have to say, I wholeheartedly disagree with the idea that restaurants and tourism are not gonna fund things in Ashland. They are, it's evident, it's happening. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, would anybody else like to come forward and speak?
No chance to rebuttal, I guess.
I apologize, sir, it's, it's just an opportunity for you to provide comments.
Fair enough. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Sorry, I didn't plan on it, but, I'm sorry. Kristi Mead, current president of Pokelining Days Festival. And I just wanted to put a positive note on our weekend. We had a fantastic weekend. We could not bring that many people downtown Ashland without the help of the city of Ashland. The Streets Department, Parks Department, Police Department, Fire Department, they all went above and beyond to assist us with anything that we needed, and the parking garage was a huge benefit to us, I think. We had a lot of vendors who parked there, a lot of people who parked there. So in conjunction with the crowd that was at the LST, I think it was invaluable. I'm sorry that he only saw a few cars in there, but there were times that it was heavily used over the weekend. So we do appreciate everything that the city does for us. This was 32 years for Pokelining Days, and we hope that we, yeah, a lot of people don't realize that.
I didn't realize that.
It's 32 years. The gentleman that you spoke to from Illinois, that is Paul Lehman, I'll give him your phone number, he'll blow you up.
Oh, he, he gave me his business card and said, call him day or night.
You'll be on there, set aside the whole day.
I just want the medication.
He calls quite frequently to make sure that you're having that reunion and what's going on. But we do appreciate the city's help, and we couldn't continue to have that festival for everyone to enjoy without the city. And I just wanted to praise everything they did for us this weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward and speak? Okay, we're gonna move on to old business.
Old business, item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Ashland Community Kitchen, Inc., the subrecipient of $40,000 from the 2022 program year community development block grant.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Ashland Community Kitchen, Inc., the subrecipient of $37,500 from the 2022 program year community development block grant for the food box program.
Same move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Shelter of Hope, Inc., subrecipient of $10,000 from the 2022 program year community development block grant.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Mission, the subrecipient of $30,000 from the 2022 program year community development block grant.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, amending the authorized positions by removing the position of field supervisor and adding an additional maintenance worker, one, two, or three, in the Department of Public Services Division of Street Maintenance. The Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan is adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the revised job description for the position of police lieutenant in the Department of Police, changing the exemption status from exempt to non-exempt in the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item G, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the revised job description for the position senior financial analyst and accountant, one or two senior accountant, both in the Department of Finance, and the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan is adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris at 501 Broome Street in the amount of $2,995 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna say thanks to Community and Economic Development. 65 houses we've demolished to date.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, our resolution of the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners, September 22nd, 2022.
Same move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
At this point, we have a, a pinning or some promotions in our police department. Doing them together? Chief, you wanna? You wanna have Nick come up first? I think one at a time. Yeah, if you don't mind, and then, actually, we'll start. Sergeant Nick Lewis, come forward, please. And Mrs. Lewis, if you will come forward. Right here, if you don't mind, that'd be great. Okay, so, chief, you wanna?
They all look good in their uniforms, don't they?
They do.
Yeah.
Nick. Twice is nice, perfect, thank you. Sergeant Adam Daniels, come forward, please. And Mrs. Daniels.
And Noah.
Oh, and Noah's here. Come on down, Noah.
Yeah, yes. What happened to your baby?
Had him promoted to lieutenant, he's gonna be assigned in the remains of criminal investigation section, he'll be on work if there, all means.
Everybody, appreciate you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, sister.
Congratulations.
Shake everybody's hand. Sergeant Ed, come on down. Ed Harrison. And Bentley Harrison, I think you're gonna be doing the pinning, my friend. But we, I do wanna make a note.
Yes.
I've watched these, this guy grow up.
Yes.
Hard to believe. Yeah.
He is being promoted lieutenant, and he'll be assigned to a watch team.
All right. Twice you get to be in front of us.
Matt's been promoted to Sergeant, and by now he's going to be multitasking, doing many things while we're trying to hire police officers. So he'll be able to stay in that position and eventually get to a watch team in control.
(applause)
Thank you very much. Good, great job.
I mean, you don't have to work the metal detector anymore.
(laughter)
Congratulations.
Mister, this golf, I mean, Officer Wes Horn. And I think Ms. Rebecca is going to be pinning you.
Wes being promoted to Sergeant, and he'll be assigned to a watch team.
You didn't wait. You're right on it.
It's all over it.
Perfect. (applause)
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Appreciate you, brother. Okay.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Hey.
And Tara and Michael Helms.
Jeremy's being promoted to Sergeant, and he will too also be, uh, for staying at the watch team. (applause)
Yeah. Congratulations.
Congrats, sister.
Congratulations. Jeremy Helms, remember in Harvard. Congratulations, Jeremy.
We'll do it at the end.
If we can have the officer to come up here just for a second. Kind of made it a tradition even during the promotion. We're already sworn, but I want to, uh, have you read it right, and you don't have to repeat everything, just like I do. So, but I do want you to just consider to the oath, how important it is for our community and for our, and to the city government itself. On my honor, I will never betray my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will also have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always maintain the highest ethical standards, and I come to the values of my community and the agency of service. Your promise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere just yet. We're going to get a picture with you guys.
Herbert wide-angle lens.
You should talk. Come on down.
No, I mean, for the number of people.
Raise your hand if you're a family member of these officers. We thank you because the sacrifice they make on behalf of their families, on behalf of our city, we take seriously, and we know it's a great sacrifice in our public service. Gentlemen, it means a lot to us, and we know the dangers you face every day are something we can't even imagine. And to walk into places and not know what's going to happen, we understand and take that seriously, and we appreciate every day that we have to find us police officers. Thank you all.
(applause)
Todd, you want to use your radio to get them?
Hey.
You got to get in there, guys. There you go.
Um, over the past hour and ten minutes, we've been in the process of re-accreditation to the Detective Administration Chief of Police. We went for our fourth accreditation. We began the processes of initial accreditation in 2009. The program is six-four, uh, senior department, and self-evaluation all the time. You can adopt over a hundred and sixty-seven different standards that basically put you in line with the top agencies throughout the United States. It also, uh, allows for you to take on those policies and, uh, activities that are tried and pushed to the limits of the court system, that we're doing the right thing all the time. And Major Scott Sexton, over the past few months, with assistance, same as Joe Powell, uh, administrator's assistance, giving all these policies, all put together, review, scan, putting up assistance so that it can be reviewed by the accreditation committee. In the last July, they made our site visit after they reviewed our policy, and we met all the standards and all the requirements through the Chief Association, and the Chief Association agreed to re-accreditate us for the fourth time for another four years. So, since, period. God did the work. Little bit of a piece there. So, uh, that's our accreditation plaque and recognition, uh, the hard work, not just what he does, but these officers, officers on the street, uh, legal department, the city itself, everything that they give us, everything that they give us to work with and get the input on. This is all about a professional agency and giving you the services to the community and improve the quality of life. So, again, I congratulate all these officers, and the officers on the street right now. Not everybody can hear you. But, uh, again, a lot of hard work, and we'll go after it again in another four years.
Todd, I want to just say real quick, uh, this can't be done without the top dog setting the highest standard. So we recognize you today as well for your efforts and continued efforts to provide the best police force across America. Thank you.
Everybody got all the pictures? Well, I need one more, Sammy.
Oh, yeah. You tell it work.
Accreditation is important. The fact that our Police Department seeks outside, uh, an outside review of the policies and procedures and how we do things is a testimony to our own transparency in trying to be the best we can be. And again, we, as a commission, are so proud of our Police Department, knowing the challenges they face every day on our behalf. Move on to new business.
New Business Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the Housing Choice Voucher Program Payment Standard Increase for Glaylow Apartments effective October 1, 2022, for the City of Ashland, Department of Community and Economic Development, Division of Assisted Housing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the Physical Year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the Physical Year 2021 CAEPER to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Item C, a reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Naming the Pond in Central Park, the E.B. Jevedon Third Pond.
So moved. Second.
I'm just going to start out with comments. No finer gentleman than Dr. Jevedon, and we appreciate our Parks Department, or, excuse me, our Park Board and Parks Department working together to find a perfect place to recognize this fine gentleman. His legacy lives on, not just in our park system, but in the many homes that he has restored and businesses he has restored throughout the community, and let's also not discount many lives he saved as a physician. So we honor him today, and I'm thrilled to see this happen.
Amen. I agree with every bit of it.
Okay.
I think that's a perfect spot.
Yeah.
I think so, too.
But how I know the history of that pond is from Dr. Jevedon. He taught me about it.
Well, I think with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement between the City of Ashland and T.A.G. Holdings, LLC Regarding Encroachment for a Freestanding Sign at 1800 Carter Avenue on the City's Right-Away.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc., in the Amount of $37,500 for the Preparation of Strategic Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just that I, I'm glad to see us doing this. Thank you, City Manager, for kind of pushing that and making sure that it happens. You know, saying, if you don't have a plan, you plan to fail, and I think a strategic plan's a great place to start.
Yeah, if you did a little bit of research, I know about strategic plans anyway. A lot of our nonprofits here in Ashland have done strategic plans recently. Just Google strategic plan city. That's it. And, you know, a lot of information will come up about the importance of doing a strategic plan that will benefit us not just for the next year or two, but in the future. And I think that's, that forward thinking is something that our City Manager and this commission has done a good job of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Before we do that, Mayor, and I know how you all love surprises on our agenda, but under, under new business, we have a matter that's of some importance relating to our wastewater treatment plant that just came to my attention about an hour ago, and that is, I'm going to read the proposed ordinance, and then I'll explain further. Mr. Hall can too, as well as you need.
Okay.
But we're asking first reading and approval of Nordance, entitled, An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Purchase Order Agreement between the City of Ashland and Mydecon, Inc., to Sply Equipment and Labor to Remove Two Broken Ariator Blades and Replace Said Blades in the Amount of $86,200 for the Department of Utilities Division of Wastewater Treatment Plant. And the short version of this is that there are, one on Monday and one on Tuesday, these aerator blades in the wastewater treatment plant went down, which reduces our capacity marked by about thirty-five percent, did you say?
About a third.
About a third, and they need immediate repair. Mydecon is prepared to get in there over the weekend and do this work, and as a result, this just, we got the quote from them, and they put out three, asked for three quotes. I literally got this less than an hour ago. Again, I know you all don't like these things coming on on the agenda, but it's sort of an emergency, and I think Mark can go into it further, but, so we're asking you to consider that.
Well, I think a reduction in capacity is enough of a concern for us on the commission to understand the need to go ahead and bring this forward, so...
Are these repairs or replacement?
Well, they'll be replacing those blades. They'll have to dig out the old ones and put in the new ones.
Must be big blades. I mean, really big blades, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very big.
Very big, very, very big. Okay.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain from that.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go into executive session. Only the item will be discussed, and no action will be taken. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you all, appreciate it.